Mr. Whitaker, we're still waiting on him.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah. Well, we can go ahead and start. You might want to leave the door open.
Yeah, lock it now.
Leave it open.
Locking now.
The worst thing about it is if you're coming in, we're doing prayer and stuff, it's kind of put you... Yeah. All right. Good morning, everyone. This morning, we were blessed to have Reverend Walker to do a prayer from Trinity United Methodist Church, and Councilperson Barnhart would lead us in the pledge.
Yes.
Please stand.
Pious God, as we come before you today as a county council, as the government of this wonderful county of Berkeley, as citizens who reside here, we ask for your blessing upon this assembly. We pray that you will guide the council through their agenda, that you will help them with whatever decisions they have to make, whatever questions they need to ask, but also whatever answers that we have to offer. We ask your blessing upon them, upon the families of this day, and the entire county government and all of our residents. We ask this, O God, in Christ's name.
Amen. A pledge we wish to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, Tony, go ahead. Good. All right. Call the meeting to order. Any items from the public? Yes, sir. Yes, sir. State your name for the record.
I'm Darryl Palmer. I own 24 hours association, tell me y'all see. I operate in West Virginia. I talked to numerous times people in the council and people and whatnot, and I've shared my name in the house. I'm fully licensed to do business in the state of West Virginia. I've been denied to be in the house. What I'd like to do is read this here paper, maybe have this separate discussion maybe next week, and we could just share it in the council and see if it comes up.
Okay. All right. So you have a towing service?
Yes.
And an impound lot?
Yes.
And are you... I believe in the years past that the towing service that you have... Anybody has a towing service? I'm speaking out of term here, and we're not on the agenda, so really won't dig too far. It's a rotation schedule, right?
That's right.
Okay.
Yes, that's correct. What they would do is they would call us whenever the rotation ends. Currently, it seems like the majority of towing is wanting lessons in big K's in the county. I think the state uses big K's, and I think the county uses lessons in the jar. And if this seems like we're being exterminated against, not being able to get on the list, they'll be in the house. You know, before the lessons, they don't let us stop.
Okay. All right. We'll check into it. We have legal counsel here, Jeff. We can do that. Do you want to get Mr. Palmer's information so we can...
I already have it.
You got it? All right. All right. So we'll be checking on to that, and maybe we can find out what's going on. And not saying you're right or they're right, we'll check into it and try to get back to you before next week even. But you're free to get on the agenda, but more than likely, it's probably going to be a couple of weeks out.
That's fine. I'm just trying to get going.
Absolutely.
I don't need to get resolved.
We all know how tough it is to be in business.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thanks for being here, Mr. Palmer. Mr. Shali?
Yes, sir.
You know, you've got to watch the company you keep sometimes. You know that, don't you?
We can just give him a fix that hair.
I'm telling you, man. I woke up this morning and did like this. I said, "Nah."
Is there a copy of these?
Yeah. State your name for the record, please.
Joshua Gregory Shali.
Okay.
This is a copy of the noise ordinance for Western County.
Yeah.
There's a highlighted section on page two.
Yeah, we got some emails on some stuff, and I don't know if anybody has responded to their email, but I haven't yet.
In this, in section C, number eight, in the highlighted section. I'm going to read the entire thing.
Sure.
Just, well, just section eight, not the entire.
No, I understand.
Organized athletic or recognized festival or similar activity sounds caused by organized athletic or other group activities when those activities are conducted on property generally used for those purposes, including stadiums, parks, schools, churches, airports, athletic fields. So that states that the provisions of this do not apply to these things. And then after that, in the highlighted section, it says, "These exceptions do not prohibit the county from declaring a specific event, activity, or activity in violation of these ordinance or other laws, rules, regulations, in any case in which the athletic event or group activity extends beyond the time, or beyond 10 o'clock a.m. and prior to 7 o'clock a.m. And this exemption does include motorcycle, motocross, ATV, or other racing, running, and/or practice events." That is a very broad description of who is or isn't the county, meaning who is or isn't allowed to decide that the event is now not exempt from this ordinance.
Let me tell you how I feel about it, Mr. Shali, real quick. Your dad has had Shali Acre for many, many years.
Yes, sir.
And what I find is, and this is me talking off the cuff, my opinion, doesn't hold any clout right now, but it seems like a lot of times people move into their area and then don't like what's there, right? Meaning concerts, meaning Tomahawk Motocross, right? So I'm the type of person that says Shali Acres have been having concerts for 20-some years, right?
Yes, sir. Well, 40, oh, pushing 45.
Right. I think it started off by having the fundraiser, maybe for your sister.
Yes.
Right?
In 1976.
Right. So in my opinion, if you're here because you're afraid that you're, you know, somebody wanting to start fussing because you're making too much noise, in my opinion personally, I think you're fine. I'm not asking legal counsel right now, and I'm not a lawyer, but I don't...
Oh, Mr. Whitaker, we're still waiting on him.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah. Well, we can go ahead and start. You might want to leave the door open. Leave it open. The worst thing about it is if you're coming in, we're doing prayer and stuff, it's kind of puts you... Yeah. All right. Good morning, everyone. This morning, we were blessed to have Reverend Walker to do a prayer from Trinity United Methodist Church, and Councilperson Barnhart would lead us in the pledge. Please stand.
Pious God, as we come before you today as a county council, as the government of this wonderful county of Berkeley, as citizens who reside here, we ask for your blessing upon this assembly. We pray that you will guide the council through their agenda, that you will help them with whatever decisions they have to make, whatever questions they need to ask, but also whatever answers that we have to offer. We ask your blessing upon them, upon the families on this day, and the entire county government, all of our residents. We ask this, oh God, in Christ's name.
Amen.
A pledge leaves to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Trinity, go ahead. Good. Um, all right. Call the meeting to order. Any items from the public? Yes, sir. Yes, sir. State your name for the record.
Darryl Palmer. I own twenty-four hours association, tell me y'all see. I operate in West Virginia. The, uh, talked to numerous times of people in council and people and whatnot, and Sheriff Palmer came to the impound house. Fully licensed to do business in state West Virginia. They're being denied to get impound house. What I'd like to do is bring us here papers, maybe have a separate discussion, maybe next week, and we could just, Sheriff Palmer and council, see if it was all missed.
Okay, all right. So you have a towing service?
Yes, sir.
And an impound lot?
Yes.
And are you, I believe in the years past that the towing service that you have, anybody has a towing service? I'm speaking out of term here, and we're not on the agenda, so really won't dig too far. It's a rotation schedule, right?
That's right.
Okay.
That's correct. It's, uh, what they would do is they would call us whenever the rotation ends. Currently, it seems like the majority of towing is wanting lessons in big K's in the county. I think the state uses big K's, and I think the county uses lessons in the majority. And if there seems like they will be exterminated against, not be able to get on the list, they'll do the impound house. You know, before the lessons, they don't let them stop.
Okay, all right. We'll check into it. We have legal counsel here, Jeff. You, we can do that. Uh, do you want to get Mr. Palmer's information so we can? You got it? All right, all right. So we'll be checking on to that, and maybe we can find out what's going on. And not saying you're right or they're right, but we'll check into it and try to get back to you before next week even. But you're free to get on the agenda, but more than likely, it's probably going to be a couple of weeks out.
That's fine. I'm just, you know, trying to get going.
Absolutely.
I don't need to get resolved.
We all know how tough it is to be in business.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thanks for being here, Mr. Palmer. Mr. Shali?
Yes, sir.
You know, you've got to watch the company you keep sometimes, you know that, don't you?
We can just give him a fix that hair.
I'm telling you, man. I woke up this morning and did like this, I says, nah!
Um, is there a copy of these?
Yeah. State your name for the record, please.
Joshua Gregory Shali.
Okay.
This is a copy of the noise ordinance for Western County?
Yeah, yeah.
There's a highlighted section on page two.
Yeah, we got some emails on some stuff, and I don't know if anybody has responded to their email, but I haven't yet.
Um, in this, in, uh, section C, uh, number eight, in the highlighted section. I'm going to read the entire thing.
Sure.
Just, well, just section eight, not the entire.
No, I understand.
Uh, organized athletic or recognized festival or similar activity sounds caused by organized athletic or other group activities when those activities are conducted on property generally used for those purposes, including stadiums, parks, schools, churches, airports, athletic fields. Um, so that states that the provisions of this do not apply to these things. And then after that, in the highlighted section, it says, "These exceptions do not prohibit the county from declaring a specific event, activity, or activity in violation of this ordinance or other laws, rules, regulations, in any case in which the athletic event or group activity extends beyond the time, or beyond ten o'clock AM and prior to seven o'clock AM. Uh, and this exemption does include motorcycle, motocross, ATV, or other racing, running, and/or practice events." That is a very broad, um, description of who is or isn't the county, meaning who is or isn't allowed to decide that the event is now, um, not exempt from this ordinance.
Well, let me tell you how I feel about it, Mr. Shali, real quick. Um, your dad has had Shali Acres for many, many years.
Yes, sir.
Um, and, and, um, what I find is, and this is me talking off the cuff, my opinion, doesn't hold any clout right now, but it seems like a lot of times people move into their area and then don't like what's there, right? Meaning concerts, meaning Tomahawk Motocross, right? So, so I'm the type of person that says Shali Acres have been having concerts for twenty-some years, right?
Yes, sir. Well, forty, oh, pushing forty-five.
Right. I think it started off by having the fundraiser, maybe for your sister.
Yes.
Right?
In nineteen seventy-six.
Right. So, so, in my opinion, if you're here because you're afraid that you're, you know, somebody's wanting to start fussing because you're making too much noise, in my opinion personally, I think you're fine. I'm not asking legal counsel right now, and I'm not a lawyer, but I don't...
Do you concert?
Um, over the years, we've typically had four-day events a year, being at concerts or other fundraisers for various things. I mean, I'm currently working now to implement, with the new legislation and new, that's going through West Virginia and the new licensing, we will essentially be able to have fifteen events a year per location, but we're trying to develop this into more than just doing concerts, trying to do bingos for fundraisers for people, trying to do car shows.
I don't think bingo is going to...
Well, I agree, but at the same time, I mean, this is extremely broad and...
He didn't say what type of bingo. He, you know, look at him, they're going to attract the younger crowd, not us, Jim, right? It's not going to say, hey, bingo!
It's more so like fundraisers for, for like schools and organizations, different things like that. That's what with the bingos and things, because you've had some of the school bands and different people come to us about one of those there.
Yeah, but I can imagine you guys doing bingo on the ground, okay? You gotta go to sixteen.
So, we, we just have a variety of more things we hope to implement. They won't all be as big and loud as, as a regular concert. As for regular concerts, I, I believe I'm not wrong in saying maybe five to eight a year.
Right. What was the concert that the people...
This weekend, we had a concert of, of a group that's out of Detroit that brought people from all over the country. They came from, uh...
Going up to the podium, I'm sorry.
They, they came from California, Las Vegas.
You know the process. State your name for the record.
H.D. Boyd, um, on the two thirty-one, West Martin Street, Lawrenceburg, West Virginia.
You don't have to do that.
I do that instead.
We don't want to give everybody all that kind of information.
Okay, so, so basically, they, they drew people from, from all over. We had people from Oklahoma and, and Chicago and...
It was a rock.
It, it was more of a...
Rock, hip-hop, rock.
Rock, hip-hop type thing. They're called the Insane Clown Posse. They paint their faces like clowns. And they're, they came out in the eighties. They're, they're from the eighties. And they brought somewhere between fifteen hundred and two thousand people from all over the country. Most of the people were not from here.
Uh-huh.
They did a meet and greet that ended up being larger than the normal meet and greet. They had a hundred and eighty people paid to do the meeting. These people went and were meeting them before they went on, which delayed them getting on the stage. So we went a little later than we normally do. Not saying it couldn't happen again, if we have bad weather and the bands have to stop for lightning or something like that, and then we have to put them on later to finish the show, it could happen. But we don't anticipate to be as late as we were this weekend. Um, that, that, we did go a little late. But, but our concern was, and on this one and the last one, the noise complaints started coming at five o'clock and after midnight. They didn't all come in when it was late, when, when the show went on late, you know, and then...
We haven't been before. All three shows this year, we had, essentially, we had noise complaints coming in due to Shali Acres at any time the music started. The, the first one of the year, we had a deputy come out, just trying to figure out, he'd gotten a call that he thought it was, somebody thought it was their neighbor. He went out to investigate it, was not the neighbor. He knew what it was, because he's from around here, came down, said, I didn't even know you guys were having a concert, but you all have a good day, and left, no issue. The last one, on June fifth, the memorial show for my dad, noise complaints came in at one o'clock in the afternoon when the concert started. It's not that noise complaints came in even just after ordinance kicks in for the county, but they, they come in all day, every day, anytime we're doing anything. It's just with this one, we had a deputy come out and order us to shut down the event, which is why I'm bringing it to your all's attention. I was ordered to shut down the event. I told him that I personally would not shut down the event, but I would escort him up to shut down the event. If he, if he, I wasn't going to stop him from doing his job, but I personally would not be held accountable for what ensued had I shut that event down, three songs into the main act, that everybody came across the country in order to see. So if he wanted to shut down, I would take him right up there. I would, you know, introduce him to the sound guys, their manager, every, everybody that was there for working that event in coordination with myself and H.D., and he could shut it down if he wanted to. Um, and, but, and what he said was that, and, and he, he stated that we had no permits to do what we were doing, that we had no, he didn't know what the, a letter of no zoning was, um, so I informed him what that was, and that we have to get one for every single event, that I do not apply for no zoning. I simply get one, I, we go in and fill out the paperwork here, and then we get it back, and then it states that we have no zoning, no ordinance.
Well, the sheriff will be here later this morning, so stick around.
Yeah, we, we'd like to speak to him. We heard he wanted to speak to us, but we couldn't get ahold of him.
Yeah, well...
And they did tell me we didn't have permits, and I was like, well, you know, I've been getting these permits personally for the last twelve years. I don't know if there's a new one that I forgot to get this time, but, you know, I go get the no zoning, I get the mass gathering permits, I get the food permits, the alcohol permits. So unless there was something new that came out this year, and the insurance for all shows, liability, and limited liability. So, you, you know, if there was something new, I just wanted to get a clarification, or at least come, say our side, because I heard there was going to be a lot of people here to complain about the noise, and, yeah, I see, but, you know.
How long did your show go on to?
It did go to one fifteen.
One fifteen?
Yeah, it was supposed to be over at twelve.
Twelve thirty. It was, yeah, so, yeah. The last man was supposed to end at twelve thirty, be off the stage, everything done, and it ended up going to one fifteen.
All right, so Jeff, I need you to, that's another job we need to check into, again, in my opinion. I mean, Shali Acres have been there for forty-plus years. Um, myself, I'd like to see more venues, stuff like that, only because I, I think it's, you know, one of the things we're trying to do is, is create some activity for the younger crowds, responsible younger crowds, okay? And, and, uh...
There were no complaints about the behavior of the crowd, or the traffic, or...
We had, the only thing that we had gotten, a gentleman who attended the concert, uh, I don't know if it was Iraq or Afghanistan, he had had his legs blown off. Um, and he had a severe PTSD anxiety attack, which he's, he's, he's a fan of theirs. He's traveled across the country to see their shows. It was just, sometimes they hit him, sometimes he called nine-one-one repeatedly. Um, deputies came out, we got him off to the side, we got him to willingly go to the hospital to get checked out because his vitals were all over. He had a, a heart rate of a hundred and sixty-five, and his blood pressure was at the... Honestly, they couldn't believe that he was alive. There were several, um, people that, I, I, apparently, it got reported as a fentanyl overdose. How, why, or what, I have no idea. Um, I don't know what that looks like, but within thirty minutes, they had gotten him calmed down, and, and he, he was willing to go in the ambulance and go to the hospital and get checked out. Other than that, to my knowledge, there were no other issues. We had no other incidents with fights where any police were not called for anything. Um, I don't know of any DUIs or anything leaving Shali Acres that anybody got, which, I mean, our policy is free camping, anybody's, we want people to stay in order to...
Sure.
You have security on the side, I assume.
Yes, sir. Yes, we have a, a professional security company to handle all of our crowd, and then we employ people that we've employed for years to work our gates and things like that, front, uh, front of house, backstage, all, all of that. We typically have around thirty-five to forty-five.
No danger of becoming another Woodstock?
No, absolutely not.
Oh, come on, Jim!
Well, I, like, I want to know.
The next show that we have is Lee Bryce, Laney Wilson, Kalista Clark. And that show was scheduled to be over a little earlier, but Lee Bryce requested to go on at eight-thirty, so he will be done at ten o'clock, ten-thirty, because he wanted to golf here locally when he comes.
Well, and your dad always struggled with country musicians, so hopefully this will, will change things, right?
That's the plan.
I mean, it's, it's...
We definitely want to bring in music of all varieties, and country, I mean, let's be, it's West Virginia. I listen to country, a lot of people listen to country, it, we're in the country. It's a great place.
Yeah. So who else is going to be there?
Uh, Lee Bryce, Laney Wilson, Kalista Clark, um, the Rock School, and I'm working on, well, I have one other I can't announce till after June second or June third, because he's got a Centerville, Virginia gig. And then I'm working on one more band. I wanted the Davidson Brothers, but they booked a gig the day before in Omaha, and the flight schedule is just on...
Right, right, yeah. Good old Davy here, huh? But, uh, they, uh, or Donnie, I should say. Um, yeah, I mean, I mean, I used to go to Jiffy Lou, and they had their side stage, and it's, and that's on the Q Fest, and, uh, and, uh, all the ones on the side stage, Gretchen Wilson, and, um, there's like five of them on the side stage, and then right after that, man, they, big time, right? Side stage is more exciting than the main stage.
Well, we got Lee Bryce, of his seventeen singles, he's put out seven of the number ones, and he's got a double platinum as well, so, you know, he's a pretty big artist. Probably one of the biggest to ever come here.
I mean, something like that, I mean, you got to have pretty, uh, pretty serious gate sales, I would think.
Yeah, we have some pretty serious money.
Yeah, yeah.
So, we're working on it, so looking pretty good, so we're hoping it goes as well as we're hoping so.
And what weekend's that?
That is Sunday, July eighteen.
July eighteen? All right, I'm out of town, all right. All right, well, thank you all.
Thank you.
All right. I think, uh, I think according to what I see, I think our ordinance is good. We, we, we do have to watch how late, you know, try to, try to be courteous to our neighbors, but, okay?
Okay.
All right. Anybody else? Anybody, anybody else have anything to say other than me? We...
You kind of covered there pretty good.
I mean...
I mean, I, you know, I, I put myself in the position of, I, I worked the first show Greg ever did.
Oh, I know.
A hundred years ago. And, uh, you know, my wife and I, we've been, we've been doing it a couple of different times, going there, and it was always a, basically a daytime show, you know, and, and then maybe late evening. You know, if I had grandchildren that live a quarter mile away trying to get to sleep, it might be a little difficult, it would be, it would probably upset me as well. So all I, all I would ask you, you know, during your show, is to try and schedule things where you're, where you are a good neighbor. You know, where when you ride down the road the next morning, you can wave at people, and they wave back with, with their whole hand, you know?
To note on that, um, or to add on to that, I had spoke, the, the majority of the complaints that I had seen, because the deputies that were there were showing where the complaints were coming from on the map. People were complaining in areas where we've never had complaints come from before. I spoke to neighbors, well, during the show, um, our closest neighbors sent me a message via Facebook saying they had no clue that this was the kind of music that was playing. They love it. Can they get tickets? Is it too late to buy tickets to come to the show? And then about ten of them did, in fact, come, buy tickets, and came into the show, and were like, this is amazing. We had never heard of the band, so we didn't know what it was. It sounds weird, but when we heard the, the music, they were like, this is great. And then they did come over. I also spoke to other neighbors in the area, um, asking them about, because we weren't, we, at the same time, we didn't run sound as high as we normally do, and when we were asked to shut, or when we were ordered to shut the show down, I, I told them I, I could go up and ask them to pull the volume down again, pull some of the bass out, because typically bass is what causes the issue, because it travels so much further than what high-end sound does, um, which they had no issue. We pulled sound immediately. Um, and, but the majority of people that I spoke to said that, not all, but the majority of our daytime shows were significantly louder, that, and, and, and the Ted Nugent Show was brought up, that it was hands down the loudest show we've ever had, and, and we didn't have anything extra for that show. We had the same amount of sound equipment, pushing the same volumes, because we use Showtime Sound out of Frederick, Maryland for that.
I think your dad, when I, when he was still around, him and I talked a good bit about it. He was telling me the, the steps he was taking, that actually the sound was able to not penetrate almost the property line, and, and how they were setting up the soundboards. Am I correct on that, H.D.?
And, and... They begged to, to curb down into the ground at, at a certain point.
Yes.
I, I think the biggest complaints on this show, people were saying, was the bass.
They couldn't make out much of the bass.
Well, that's an non-directional sound, and, and that's how that works, yeah.
And, and so basically, I don't know if they were exaggerating, but people were saying their windows were around. Um, you know, so they, I don't believe, no deputy told us directly that they had a reading at someone's home that was above a desk full of them.
Yeah.
Which, to add to that, in two thousand thirteen, there were desk full readings, um, because the development that was built on Shali Road behind us was not aware at the time when they bought houses, that we were there. Come to find out, they were made aware, and their contracts that Roger Ayers had put in that in there, because Dad had told him, you know, that's right now, we're not open, but we're subject to open at any time. And we did, within a year or two of that, uh...
Yeah, I, I know your dad was working hard with, with the neighbors up there to, you know, to help alleviate some of that, um, sound that went past, you might say, the line.
Okay.
They're right, they're correct. Continue to do that.
Yeah. All right, all right, thank you. We got to get, get moving here, I'm way behind schedule. No, that's fine. Uh, need a motion to approve the agenda. Anybody else, nobody else from public, correct? Need a motion to approve the agenda?
President, I move we approve the agenda for Thursday, July first, two thousand twenty-one.
Motion been made?
Second.
Second. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Any questions on the purchase order? There ain't. No internal budget revisions, Mr. Wine? Uh, change in status. We have a new hire recommendation received from Honorable Sheriff Nathan Harmon for Velma Nobit as a part-time deputy clerk with an hourly rate of thirteen dollars and fifty cents effective July first, two thousand twenty-one. We have a new hire recommend, recommendation received from, um, the Honorable Larry Hess Assessor for Amber McLoad, um, as a personal property clerk with an annual salary of twenty-five thousand effective June twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-one. New hire recommendation received from Mike Lang, Chief Court Marshal for, uh, Debra.
Debra.
Debra?
Detra.
Detra, okay. I'm making a B instead of a D. Detra Carroll as a, uh, building custodian with an annual salary of twenty-four thousand, seven eighty-six effective July thirteenth, or fifteenth, two thousand twenty-one. Change in status received from Mike Lang, Chief Court Marshal for James McBee. He is receiving a career ladder increase for two years of service. His salary is going from thirty thousand, eight forty-four to thirty-two thousand, one fifty-eight. Letter resignation received from, uh, Kip Williams effective July ninth, two thousand twenty-one. Letter resignation received from the Day Report Center for Katie Schaefer effective July twenty-first, two thousand twenty-one. Letter retirement received from the Assessor's Office for Sherri McDonald effective June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-one. Any questions on change in status? We have, um, minutes for June the seventeenth, two thousand twenty-one. I was not present. Anybody want to make a motion for those?
I'll move to, uh, accept the, uh, minutes for June seventeenth, two thousand twenty-one, as presented.
Second.
Uh, we have a motion on the floor in a second. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
All right.
Anyone opposed? The motion carries. Uh, county council calendars?
President, you have a bid opening.
At ten o'clock? All right. I was thinking it was a recommendation. All right, uh, let's see. Bid opening, RFP, uh, less lethal chemical munition?
Yes, sir. It's, it has been advertised in the journal, it was placed on the website, and delivered to all vendors that Tracy had, that were willing to, if we knew, thought maybe...
And we only have one bid?
Yeah, one bid received, sir.
All right. The bid that we received is Atlantic Tactical out of New Cumberland, PA. Is this a Lumpsum bid, do you know, Mr. Wine?
I didn't read this back. Tracy's at Lumpsum? I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
All right. It's not the easiest thing we're trying to figure out.
Prices quoted shall be all-inclusive without simple charges.
Yeah, I'm trying to think, Jim. It looks like page two is the total, even though page one has a total as well. Yeah. Page one has a description of one, thirteen descriptions, uh, the running, it says running sub-total, okay, was twenty-three thousand, two sixty-three. And then you go back to the back page, which is fourteen through twenty-four, which is the total. So I was correct. It appears... It appears it's forty-one thousand six fifty-one forty-six. So, it does look like they're bidding twenty-four items. And, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten. I counted twenty-three on the bid sheet, but tw- it looks like twenty-four that they've bid.
Those will be reviewed with Tracy and the Sheriff's Department, so I'm sure we'll get a-
I'm sorry, twenty-fourth would be shipping and handled. Which is a crazy amount. Over five thousand dollars.
It was, I said it was. It was published, yes.
So, it looks like all the items are worth four price, appears to be.
Twenty-three items.
Yeah. Alright. Okay. The, uh, moving on to the county council calendars, um, will be closed to, uh, for the, to recognize the Fourth of July on July the fifth, which will be this coming Monday, we'll be back in the chambers on next Thursday.
The eighth.
Mm-hmm. Uh, next week on boards and commissions, it looks like Tuesday, the sixth at five P.M., sewer district, six P.M., stormwater district, six P.M., planning commission. Wednesday, the seventh, four P.M., Telamon. Thursday, the eighth, at six-thirty P.M., fire board, any changes or corrections of boards and commissions? Cancelled check request from the county clerks' finance office, any questions on that? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved, Mr. President.
Motion been made, do we have a second?
Second.
Do we have a second, any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion carries. Good morning, Mr. Hess. You have three personal property tax exemptions for reasons of office error.
Yes, sir.
I can't imagine that.
There's only three, isn't there?
I know, and, and like you said, with the, with the volume that your office does, it, it, it's, it's great, you know?
Yeah, but that first one.
That first one's a killer.
Yeah.
Uh, she just added an extra number to.
I'd say a couple of numbers.
Like a forty thousand dollar assessment instead of two hundred and three.
Well, you're gonna make Mr. Perkins a happy man.
So, yeah. But anyway, that was four thousand seven hundred seventy-three dollars, not any sense, but that, yeah, correct that. The other two was for just, uh, you know, vehicle keyed under the wrong account and-
You had the wrong vehicle taxed under the wrong amount? It's too strong.
Wrong account.
Well, it says wrong vehicle is taxed under the wrong one.
Yeah, I think it was, uh, his, his name was Jeffrey Lynn Nichols, but it got keyed under Jeffrey Lynn Nichols, the same. The same name, but they grabbed the folder off of him.
Well, it's crazy that there's, um-
So, that happens.
There's a husband and wife that's, there's two husband and wives with the same name.
Yeah. Yeah, that happened.
Yeah.
The total of those three is five thousand one hundred and fourteen dollars and one cent.
Alright, entertain a motion, uh, for the three personal property tax exemptions due to office errors.
So moved.
Second.
Motion been made, second, any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Hess. Um, we have a board meeting reports, Mr. Barnhart.
I had no meetings this week.
Alright, um, Mr. Whittaker?
I did receive an email yesterday that, um, on the board of, uh, Eastern Panhandle Transit Authority, that, um, the, uh, Jackie Long, our member there, is gonna resign, uh, because the school board's keeping her quite busy and it's kind of rough on her schedule, so we'll have an opening there.
Okay. Yeah. If anybody can work with that present you got there, that's pretty good. Mr. Gokunhar?
Yes, I had a landmarks commission meeting, uh, one of the biggest topics there was, uh, cemeteries, uh, throughout the county that, that the landmarks has record of, um, during the planning process, you know, development, you know, through the environmental process, there was a checkoff, uh, about cemeteries to make sure that, uh, the property is looked at, to make sure there are no cemeteries on it. And, um, a lot of times, that may in fact be getting pushed over, damaged, whatnot, so. I spoke with Todd Funkhauser in reference to, he, he's got a lot of them that are already deeded, um, or located by deed in book, paid number, to get with Heather to see if, I'm trying to get with IT to see if we can actually get an overlay created or some other type of, uh, recognition of these sites so that they're not lumps forever. I, I think that's important, you know, for the history of the families and, um, that these grave sites be treated, you know, with, with regard and respect, so.
And eternal rest.
And eternal rest, absolutely. Uh, I did have a home resourcing meeting, which I, I did not make, but I reached out to another, a member of that committee, Natalie Hoffman, to try and get a, an idea of, of the sales of real estate, uh, in the last several months. So, from, um, from May of twenty twenty until May of twenty twenty-one, um, the average price of a home went from two oh four five to two hundred and thirty-nine thousand nine hundred, so.
That's new homes or?
What was the old price and new price again?
Two oh four to two thirty-nine.
I'm surprised it didn't go more now.
And that's lumber one.
Yeah.
Well, that was, you know, up, up till May.
Right.
So.
Alright. Yeah.
It really probably didn't capture that, that major increase, in which I understand, um, is about a, close to a thirty percent increase just in, uh, materials.
Well, material, some material had quadrupled in price.
Well, as far as overall price of a home, it took it up, you know, nearly thirty percent just on material alone.
Yeah, because I'm hearing from some of our appraisers that the houses have went up eighty thousand dollars since last year.
Well. Um.
And, you know, it's all because of the material.
And here was an, another, uh, that kind of raised my eyebrow, was the average days on the market before it was under contract was thirteen. With my previous year, it was forty-seven.
A lot of times, it's like three. And, and, uh, one step further, if you tell them that you want a home inspection and an appraisal, they'll tell you, don't waste your time.
Right.
We won't accept the bid. The offer.
So, you know, just from, uh, May of twenty twenty until May of twenty twenty-one, it saw an increase of seventeen point three one percent in value or cost. So, you call it value, but it costs.
And that's what I was told, seventeen percent. Hey, Mr. Wine, we were talking about seventeen percent. How, how, the number that I was given, that Berkeley County is growing, which is growing tremendously fast and faster than anybody would probably like, was heard the crazy number of seventeen thousand people per year. That can't be when we're only putting thirteen hundred houses.
Average of three, three, average of three per house.
Right. So, I don't know where that seventeen thousand people come from. But I did hear while I was in Florida that Tampa is growing by a thousand people a day. That's what I was told.
Orlando's gotta be doing the same, you know?
Yeah.
Down there, all the orchards, the-
Orange groves.
Orange groves, you know, turn into housing groves.
Well, you can, you can only imagine people that, that were fleeing from New York, California. You know?
Well, they're stopping here first.
They're bleeding.
Emerging, not bleeding, they're emerging.
Yeah. Yep, alright. Had enough time to talk about picking on those four states. Um, alright, I had a ambulance authority meeting on Thursday night and, um, just wanna, I wanna try to get them on schedule, Penny, maybe see if, uh, the president of the ambulance authority, Dave Urban, or, and, and maybe the director could come in and talk to us and try to keep us informed, I don't want things to fall through the crack with them. As, um, uh, Councilperson Gokunhar knows that they are tremendously busy, they have been tremendously busy over the years. Just as, as short period, about a year, year and a half ago, they were doing about ten thousand calls, I think that they're up to thirteen thousand now is their projected year out. Um, and, um, they've, uh, they've made a lot of advances, um, trying to keep up with everything that they, they need to keep up with. Um, but, um, the, the one thing that the president, uh, did state, um, was, uh, that the revenue, because we gotta, we gotta look at the, how, how much the cost is going up versus how much the revenue's going up, is it proportionate? The revenue's going up about three percent a year. Um, and the overhead on the employee overhead, uh, because of the call volume, is fourteen percent. And being a banker like he is, he says that's not sustainable much long, too long. Uh, and the problem is, and, and they're gonna dig in deeper, that it seems like they're getting called on stupid stuff. That's the best way I can put it, you know? It's stubbed toe, you know, or, and, and things like that, which you, you know, because we approved it too, that they did put something in because they were being called on to assist people to go to their doctor's appointment and all kinds of crazy stuff, so they had to put in something which we approved that if you refused a, a grant, then you got charged fifty dollars because of the, the cost of doing business. Um, so, um, they gotta, they also, one of the things we're gonna have to do, and, and Councilperson Gokunhar talk, and I talked about this too, is we, we gotta have, start to get some redundancies. Um, a lot of times, every ambulance in the city, in the county is out. And, you know, we, we gotta be able to, to, like, uh, Eddie said, South Berkeley always had two ambulances, now they only have one. But they always had two, uh, years ago. And, um, and then we, we worked through the, the situation, or we should be working through with the cooperation of the county council and, and trying to put our heads together of the situation we had in Back Creek. Uh, where the situation was, it was hard to find staff for the ambulance to be a, a EMT or a paramedic and have the experience to be a firefighter. Have the certification, one thing, but having the experience. And it was, I think I'm saying this correctly too, we have certified paramedic and we have, and, but they don't practice like they do from the ambulance authority, so. Um, Director, um, Brian Costello was saying that that needed to change, we would need to, and he said it very passionately and very, very much, uh, on it, he's brought it to the, to the board eight different times about his concerns and, um, so, with that said, we had a meeting, um, what about a week and a half ago, two weeks ago? Two weeks ago. And, um, we, we came to a conclusion to where, you know, we could, and Randy Lilly, um, said that, look, we, we got a, we got a problem getting part-time firefighters. You know, because people's gonna go somewhere where it pays more than twelve fifty an hour? Thirteen fifty an hour. So, the overtime right now on his is, we're spending a lot of overtime, the backfill position for part-time that can't, can't be filled, which we've been hiring people to do that, we hired two, um, so I think next week we'll be asking you to, to hire the third one from the pool that we, we had, uh, doing that, so. There's a lot of things we're gonna be looking at, um, uh, from the ambulance authority that just wanna keep the county council up to date. Uh, Chad, uh, Chief Chad, uh, Weinbrenner has, has great stats, I continually ask him to advance on that. Um, and the other, the, the big thing is too, uh, um, there was, um, a situation on two ambulance authorities, uh, meetings ago, that Director, uh, Costello, uh, confronted in a, in a, in a, as his word, in a bad way, a very passionate way, of his concerns with Back Creek. And he, uh, he said, I, I did it publicly and I'm gonna apologize publicly and let you know that I was wrong. Uh, I let my emotions and my personal beliefs get into my business, uh, um, approach. And he was very apologetic to the board and to the county council and to Mr. Lilly and, and, and the fire and everything else, so. Just wanted to make sure you, you, all that's been squared, squared up, taken care of, and, uh, and it's done very professionally, so. Other than that, anybody have questions on any of that?
No questions, other than the, uh, South Berkeley, um, station is well underway for the construction, the additions, and, uh, it looks very nice, they are putting in a lot of green space in up there, which before it was all asphalt, and they've, they've gone really, really nice job on that.
Yeah, yeah, and I, I think that, I think, um, one of the things that, um, President also said, uh, Mr. Urban, was that, you know, we, we really, he, he's put a, 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 a planning committee together to think about where we go and what we need to look for and, and, uh, how can we do a better job and all kinds of stuff, so. Um, and that's a, that's a good committee and, and they're gonna be looking at that, and, and they had their first meeting last week, or, yeah, last, early last week. Um, so I look for good results to come out of that committee, and, uh, so.
I think one of the next stations is North End, it's gotta be really looked at pretty soon.
Kind of like the Spring Mills area, where there is, there is, was, was some conversation about trying to get a piece of property for a betting thing down there. I haven't heard anything more about that lately, but, you know, uh, Chairman, uh, uh, well, hopefully, if, if that's the case, we can, that's one of the things that we're, I'm proud to say that this, this ambulance authority board is very open-minded, very business-minded, and that the previous board, um, and we was part of that meeting. And we had a council person act like he was a rock star and a movie star, and, and, but, uh, um, during that meeting, but, that, that south station should have went into the fire station. And the fire board in the, in South Berkeley was all for it, but the ambulance authority wasn't. So, but I, I think that, you know, there's more, um, cooperation, I think.
More good things to come.
Huh?
More good things.
Oh, yeah, I think so, I think so.
Well, yeah, as, as the county population continues to grow, you know, you're gonna have to expand these services to value, you know? The response times, uh, are not, are not acceptable, they're, they're not. Uh, yesterday evening, for example, there was a, an accident right, uh, just north of Back Creek Firehouse. So, or the, the ambulance in Inwood.
North of Back Creek Firehouse?
Yeah, it's just right there about Kyle Mason Lane, it was just, you know, quarter mile down the road from the fire station. The ambulance in Inwood was out on call, so the next available ambulance is coming through nine seven and headed to the building.
Right.
We gotta do better. We gotta do better, and that's, that happens a lot.
Oh, I know.
It's just because of their volume, their call volume.
Well, the other thing too, that, that the ambulances, they were talking, uh, Chief Weinbrenner was talking about the ambulances having a, a different, um, um-
They have a BLS units.
Yeah, they have BLS, so they're trying to do everything they can to, to make, keep it very, very efficient, but, what do you call, run area? They, they were gonna, if they were gonna put the extra person back in Back Creek Valley, the run area was gonna expand. Well, and so, uh, Mr. Weinbrenner and, 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 uh, Director Costello, um, that was a serious concern of mine, and you take that ambulance out of Back Creek Valley and goes over the mountain, over to Inwood, that's trouble, so, they're gonna, they're putting another ambulance in, in wood and keep the one in Back Creek Valley. Because, so, but we're, we're trying everything we can, but, you know, it's, it's gonna, it's, we have to get some redundancy. I mean, they're, they're being hammered all the time. And right now, the staffing is a little bit of an issue. Uh, it's, it's sort of like being a state, state police, state policeman or, uh, or, you know, on our paramedics and the EMPs, they're being the same way. You can go somewhere else, get half the call volume. And because of our public safety, they got the call volume, that's for sure. So, not a, not a time to be bored at that job. But very, very good board, very good organization, great staff, um, continue to do good things.
With the resources.
With the resources they have. With the resources they have. Yep. Any board and commission vacancies? I just.
Mr. President, I'd like to move to appoint Chad Weinbrenner to the Regional Planning and Development Council to fill the unexpired term of Kathy Mason. Do you know how long that is?
All right. Got a motion on Florida, we have a second?
Second.
Second, any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye. Anyone opposed? The motion carries. Also, we have a letter resignation for Jerry Williams from the Parks and Rec. Just want to say that Mr. Williams has been a member of the Parks and Rec for 40-some years.
Is he a part of our programs?
He is. And, and I, I know he's, he's going through some illnesses and stuff, and I'd just like to thank Jerry publicly for his dedication to the Parks and Rec. And, and I know we'll be sending him a letter and, and thanking for a job well done. So wish him the very best.
Jerry has always been around sports. He was a, he was a great basketball player at Mussum years ago. And when I was in grade school, he and his girlfriend, Nelda, at that particular time, ran a, it was like a clinic, but it was, it was during the summer.
A camp?
Yeah, a camp, you know, in the, in the school system. And, you know, we had some pretty good athletes and he, he took us, man. He, he took us around, you know, showed us off, because we could, we could play a little ball back then. And, you know, he's since, you know, married Nelda and, you know, just a great, great couple.
Hey, with that said, somebody had a birthday this week.
It did.
Huh?
It did.
Doesn't look, doesn't look a day older at all.
It does. Well, yeah, I had fun, I have a grandkids, we had, we had a big, made a big week out of it.
Happy birthday. Yeah. All right. Anything else? All right, Tracy, we're right on time. We got Tracy, Tracy Gillum, grants administrator, MOU, Berkeley County Board of Education for Project Aware. Tell us a little bit about it.
This will continue the Project Aware that's currently in the JOTIP grant that ends September 30th of 2023. This grant will pick it up October 1st, 2023 and run year two and three of this new grant.
All right.
Providing the same services through East Ridge and referral program through the school and East Ridge is there.
Well, tell us a little bit about Project Aware.
Project Aware is a fabulous program for at-risk youth that kind of get lost in the shuffle. And the school teachers and the school counselors and principals are taught how to recognize warning signs that maybe they need a, somebody to talk to so that they don't dip into either drugs or targeted items.
So is this the one, is this the one, one of the ones where if there, something happens in their household, where maybe a mom or dad gets arrested, that, you know, somebody catches them at school the next day and talks to them and makes?
Yes, that, that can be, but it doesn't happen to be. There has been a lot of referrals over this last year because of the school shutdown and the kids not coping well, especially middle schoolers. So there's been a lot of referrals into Project Aware for that specifically anxiety and depression because their routine of going to school and normal activities was abruptly taken away from them last March. So there are a lot of referrals going into Project Aware.
You know what happens when people get in that mode? They self-medicate.
And that's, that's, this program is trying to curtail that and give them instruction on how to, things to do to whet your anxiety and different methods to curtail that and other, other things. And talking to somebody, just specifically talking to somebody who's not your parent and not your brother or sister or relative comes in handy and you get it off your chest and it's confidential and nobody will know, you know, when you just go in and just put everything out there.
Mr. Gopinari, you want to talk a little bit about what we talked about this morning, about the possibility with Parks and Rec and the Boys and Girls Club?
I, I can't get too far out in front of you because I know there's still conversations, a lot to be had.
It's a great vision.
It is. Parks and Rec is looking at, you know, trying to do some things together with Boys and Girls Club, you know, bring, bring these agencies together.
I happened to have a conversation yesterday with Tim. If I could clue you in, not on the record, but, but off.
Oh, you're on the record.
I don't, I don't want to say because it may.
Well, I was going to say, it, it's been a couple of weeks now since I asked you for a, a couple hundred million dollar grant so we can, we can help this Project Aware to take care of the kids, right?
This would be, this would be a grant that would, I would have to work all year when it comes out next summer because of some red tape at the other party would be game for it. And then it wouldn't take effect until summer of 2023, but it would run for three years. But I think we're kind of in a line with that, so.
Okay.
But I just, I just kind of want to pay you the courtesy of me going out and talking to this other entity.
Let's talk after the meeting. All right. All right. And one of, one of the things with HD and Mr. Shali, one of the things that, that I always felt would be pretty cool would be to teach young kids and old men like me how to play a musical instrument, you know? It's kind of, where do I go? You know, I, I know you can find people that wants to do it online, but I'm, I'm one of them people that, you know, you got to, you got to drill it into my head multiple times and I'm a hands-on person. Don't ask me to read something and, and perform.
Yeah.
Right? But, you know, and, and I, I think that's got a lot to do, talk to Mr. Knowles like when he was in Recovery Resource Center about bringing music into recovery. You know? What a great way.
Somebody you might want to speak to is the Rock School.
Down on Queen Street, or they were on Queen Street?
They have a chapter of project down at Chapel Hill Street. They open a lot of our shows. They'll be opening the Boogie Blythe Show.
Oh, is that right? Cool.
We work as partners with them. So they bring in children from all over, from both of their local schools. They, they have schools all over the nation.
Right.
And then they get a chance to essentially play in front of a major crowd, to work through those obstacles that in a classroom, they would never be able to get through, you know? Sage presence, things like that of that nature.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, Tracy. So you need a motion to approve the 20, 2021 grant, right?
Yes, the, the MOU with the school, and then we should also have one for the Martinsburg Initiative.
Okay.
As well. And the Martinsburg Initiative MOU is for them to provide a social worker in the school. They have one that is grant funded, it's going to be an additional one because she's open located.
And this is, this is basically Jody Greenberg, right? So do you have?
No, it, the person who is running Project Aware is Patrick Patton.
Mm-hmm. Okay. All right. Entertainer motion to, for the MOU for Berkeley County's Board of Education and Martinsburg Initiative.
We'll do one for each, because there are two different initiatives.
Okay. Let's do the school board first.
I move to approve the MOU memorandum of understanding between Berkeley County Council and the Berkeley County Board of Education in reference to the comprehensive opioid, stimulant, and substance abuse study and, and Project Aware.
Well, that's quite the motion, Mr. Barnhart.
Well, you know.
Do we have a second or not?
I know.
All right. Any discussion?
Does the Board of Education also do a, a motion to approve?
Yeah, yes. And then they'll, they'll sign that out.
And you give me the authority to sign that, I guess?
I don't know.
Huh?
You're kind of shady there.
I am.
I'm not sure I'm going to give you that.
Better do your homework, big boy. All right. We have a motion, we have a second, and we had a discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion carries. Now we have the MOU with Martinsburg Initiative. Any motion on that? You've done quite the good, quite a good job.
I move to accept the memorandum of understanding between the Berkeley County Council and the Martinsburg Initiative in reference to the FY21 Comprehensive Opioid Stimulant and Substance Abuse Site-Based Program and a, for a social worker.
And give the president.
Again, if he wants it.
Oh, my gosh. All right.
Seconds.
Second. Any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye. Anyone opposed? The motion carries. Thank you. All right. Next on our agenda, we have Will Lawrence, fiduciary supervisor, our state accounts for the month of June. Will, we, we had some interaction going this week and I don't think it was coming from you. I had emails from you.
Yes.
Saying that you were going to come upstairs and you was there at my, my beck and call and.
Yeah, I received a, a request for some kind of assistance a couple of times from a email claiming to be from you.
We had all gotten them from you this week.
Yeah.
Every stamp I ever got.
There's some young man or young woman in India that had a lot of interviews with you, Will.
I know.
Yeah. Well, then, then.
If you were like me, you would have just ignored it.
I see.
Yeah.
I'm not going down that road.
Before I, I start with the estates, I wanted to inform the council on some pretty significant changes that actually into the estate laws for West Virginia that came into effect today, July 1st. Suffice to say that West Virginia has now kind of embraced the affidavit filing policies of our states, our surrounding states anyway, Pennsylvania, Maryland, and Virginia for the states of a smaller son. Now, what the small estates law is meant to do is kind of create a one-stop shop where you file an affidavit declaring a small estate to be small. You file any heirs or beneficiaries therein, and after they file the affidavit, they have six months to administer any kind of estate business. And after that six months, the estate is considered closed. And that is it. There is no notice of creditors, there is no bonding, there is no whatsoever.
What's a small estate?
A small estate by the law's definition is $50,000 in personal assets and $100,000 in real estate assets. And of course, the real estate assets are ascertained by calculating 167% of the assessed value, the, the taxed value of the property thinking. Of course, that the law says that the assessed value is to be 67% of the actual fair market value of the real estate, along with that way of saying, we have a math problem. So the, how this is changing is, is this is an optional procedure, of course. So full probate is still on the table for estates of a larger size or indeed for the states that kind of need administration and protection that full probate offers. But I wanted the council to know that, of course, you know, these, a good majority of these states that are open for full probate in Berkeley County are, would satisfy the definition of a small estate.
So there's a lot of them that were closed out?
Hope, that's, that's the hope. The other concern I have certainly is business awareness. I mean, our banks, our nursing homes are going to be made aware of the, because I, I'm not technically qualifying anybody as an executor or an administrator. They would get what's called a certificate of successorship, which, you know, businesses recently have come to expect what's called a letter of administration. You only get that through full probate.
Right.
So are these businesses going to be aware of them? I've already sent memorandums of the, the new law to a good amount of bank tellers and things like that to expect these, these certificates. But, you know, policies will be what they are, and a lot of times, some businesses say, well, I'm used to seeing X, I want to see X. And so hopefully as time moves on, we educate the small business community to these certificates and we can kind of help families kind of, it, it's lessen the burden of the state management. And I guess that's the whole, the whole point of, of this law to begin with. Anyway.
Well, Will, first of all, I mean, you've heard us say it before, I'll say it again, you do a wonderful job. It's, it's a, it's an honor to have you as part of our team. And your mom usually asks me to give you a hard time, but I'm going to praise you today. So, but, and with that said, I'm going to recuse myself, hand, hand this portion of the meeting over to Vice President Whitaker. There's a, Marion Beard was an employee of mine and also a relative, and then Judith Copenhaber is a distant Copenhaber relative of mine, so I'm going to step out of the room. That way there's no questions.
All right, council, there's nothing else. I'll begin with the final settlements, we have 30 presented and 30 per settlement, and we also have one interim settlement on the state. The estate of Jerry L. Barrett, the estate of Flora B. Mittel, the estate of Thomas E. Deegan, the estate of Larry S. Hammond, the estate of Tina M. House, the estate of Victoria J. Height, the estate of Eleanor R. Hunter, the estate of Betty J. Beard, the estate of Reda M. Arcus, the estate of Marion F. Beard, the estate of Edward G. Blair, the estate of Elizabeth B. Chaddick, the estate of Judith A. Copenhaber, the estate of Una A. Cunnings, the estate of Dolly M. Howell, the estate of Phyllis J. H. Hunley, the estate of Catherine E. Houston, the estate of Rebecca J. Krantz, the estate of Robert N. Lor, the estate of Gregory K. Long, the estate of Patricia A. Mahaffey, the estate of Bobby J. O'Brien, the estate of Julio Orsini, the estate of George R. Reiner, the estate of Leon E. Sisk, the estate of Joe A. Stags, the estate of Carlton S. Stoltz, the estate of James R. Under, the estate of Doyle E. Vincent Sr., and the estate of Nancy C. Ware, AKA Nancy Carol Cantrell Ware. I'd ask council to rule on the final settlements and as a separate motion, also rule on the interim settlement before I read that final settlement.
You've heard the request. Do I have a motion for the final settlement?
Mr. President, Vice President, I move to accept the final interim settlement. Don't remember how many you said.
Thirty.
Thirty, as presented.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye. Like sign a po.
I have one interim settlement, and that interim settlement is for Jerry E. Davis.
I have, I move to accept the interim settlement as presented.
All those in favor say aye. Like sign a po. Motion carries. And I don't know if Doug signs those.
I believe.
I should sign them. Okay. About. I'll be down to see you. Or somebody in here that's got a question.
All right. Just in time to take a break. I could have done that. All right, we're back in session. Next on our agenda is Nancy Strine, CDBG and Home Administrator, City of Martinburg Home Consortium Resolution for 2022-23. Seems like you was just here.
I know, I know, I was. I think I told you I'd be there. Yeah, okay. I do have a report to do, I don't have a public carry, but I have a report, so I have good news.
Good. We're always wanting to hear good news.
Yeah, well, you know, homes be the largest conglomerate for state local government that basically is exclusively for homeownership and to create housing for low-income households. And as you know, with the Home Consortium of Eastern Carolina, we put a majority of the funds in the first-time homebuyer program. And I brought some new flyers I'll give to you because the income limits changed a little bit. In Berkeley County, they actually adjusted it a bit, but then the housing prices went up a little bit, which is good because we were jumping, and I think you got the sales information.
Yes.
We talk about, and I did want to kind of mention that because with the first-time homebuyer program for Berkeley County, for existing homes, it went up to 196. It was 185, so it went up to 196. And then for new houses, new construction, it went from 238 to 243, which kind of goes along a little bit then, because your median average, your median price sale is 239. There's still a lot of houses being sold that are over this limit. But the good news is, since I was here the last time, we renewed for the three years. We've done 40, 40, 40, first-time homebuyers in Berkeley County.
That's great.
So I know you always want to make sure that you get your minus one, so that's why I wanted to.
You know us well, don't you?
So the, it was, the lowest price was 81,000, and the highest was 190. A lot, and it was, you know, falling waters, a quarter mile, and then a lot, you know, in the county, across the county. But I don't know if you saw the thing in the paper, but when I was in Charles Town, I was saying that working here before, they were doing a lot in Jefferson. Still, Jefferson picked up with the interest of Berkeley County pretty much for 2021, was pretty much the most ago, I don't know. And we don't have to worry about any of the funding because cumulative, I have 188,341 available for first-time homebuyers to utilize in Berkeley County. So that's a lot.
It is.
Right now, historically, we assisted 153 first-time homebuyers in Berkeley County out of the 316. So almost a quarter of half.
Good.
Natalie Huffman, there's the updates at the Home Consortium, and she was telling us from California, that it's still a seller's market, so some of the first-time homebuyers are having a hard time getting in. But Telomont's been doing a great job with the home education program, and it's a two-day session in the afternoon, early evening. And I usually get on and go to the hack program, and we've gone from maybe like eight people in the class up to 20. So a lot of people are generally, you know, hardly taking advantage of it. It might take them a little bit longer to find a house. Sometimes they go through a couple houses. But also, you know, the buying new construction as well, the townhouses that are going on, just had two this year. So the Ryan Townhouses.
So most of them looking for three-bedroom houses?
Um, most of them are just looking for first-time homebuyers. Some of them are.
Different.
One that was a two-bedroom, you know, a little bit on. One that was a two-bedroom, you know, where their own, um, to have a good one, one that.
Right.
But, you know, it was an elderly approach, elderly approach. So. So, but it's, it's, uh, varies.
No, just asking that question because maybe tiny houses or something like that would be, because I mean, the, the one thing is, is when you able to buy a house in a lower, lower price range, uh, sometimes they're not efficient at all. And, you know, that's the, that's the one thing that you gotta be careful with is, is your electric bill may be $400, but it could be 50 bucks. Big, big difference nowadays. So, but good.
Natalie did tell us there was a lot of, there's lack of inventory. Because the average day on the market was 13 days this year as opposed to 47 the last year. So things when they go on the market, they go quicker.
Definitely a seller's market.
Yes.
All right.
But there's still demand for the program.
All right. So you need a motion to adopt the resolution, is that right?
Correct. To stop the resolution and also the block, the, the sign of blocking.
Yeah, we'll do that in two different motions. So entertain a motion to, uh, adopt the resolution for fiscal year 2022-23 for Home Consortium.
Second.
Motion been made. Second, any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye. Anyone opposed, the motion carries.
I'm sorry, Doug. It says between July 1, 2021 to June 30, 2024.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Is that okay? Is that right? Okay.
Okay.
Amended motion.
Yeah, all right. Motion been amended. Um, all right. And then the Home Consortium Cooperation Agreement. And you get the year, right?
I don't see a year on this one. 2021.
Well, I've got 2022 and 23.
23, okay.
Well, it's the fiscal year 2022 and 2022 and 2024, but it's back to start today.
So moved?
Motion been made. Second, any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, the motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I appreciate it. Oh, I did want to tell you, I wanted to hit you, Doug, in the end. And they're very supportive and interested, too.
Good.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Next on our agenda is Dan, um, Interview of Boarding Commission. I'm sorry, Dan Sheikh?
Sure.
Sure. Uh, candidate for Berkeley County Board of Zoning Appeals. Dan, I think I seen you in this audience not too long ago.
You probably have. Good morning, good boy.
Good morning, sir. You're a tall fellow.
I am.
Ah? So tell us a little bit about why you want to apply for the Board of Zoning Appeals and, uh, tell us a little bit about yourself that we don't know.
Okay. The reason I want to apply is I was educated, uh, basically in the previous hearings we've had over the zoning of where I live. And I'm sure you all know you're with the.
Tuscarora Zoning District.
In that process of me attending these, uh, I think there's a need for people to be involved in what they want to see change or what they want to see stay the same. At the same time, uh, as my application might indicate, I was part of the BCA for one term. I was on there with Scott McAvoy. And the reason that I left was this work schedule's changing. And that little bit of an age factor involved. I couldn't work the 12-hour days and also be committed to, to be a member of that board. At this point, license unretired, uh, I have all the time in the world.
You know, you know what we tell people when you tell us that. We got all kinds of boards of commissions.
There you go. Other than that, uh, about myself, born and raised in Martinsburg. Left here for 25 years to work for another company, uh, returned when I was in my early 40s and have lived in Sharrers Lane since.
It's a great place.
Most recently, I retired from the U.S. Postal Service.
Okay, good.
And I'm hoping to any other.
Well, that's why we get our mail from a month late now. You retired.
But thank God I don't work in this area. I worked in, in the first order, which ours was next to that.
Yeah, I think the mail service is the worst it's ever been.
I think so.
Yeah, yeah.
A lot that I have, only because I have some inside information, that when they, uh, did away with the distribution center being here in Martinsburg and everything goes out of state, comes back here, uh, in an inappropriate time way. That's, that's where this community loves to mail.
Well, and you know what? And I don't, I don't mean to start on this, but we gotta be careful because, I mean, when, when that happened, uh, there was a lot of good jobs that were lost.
Yes.
And, and sad to say, but, you know, the, the postal service has always, uh, it has been talked about the performance many, many times, even at the federal level. And with today's internet and being able to pay bills over line with credit card and, and, and be able to do all kinds of stuff on them. And it's kind of like they're writing their own, uh. They're going downhill. They're giving people, I mean, we, we will give people options at my business of saying, hey, you, you sure you want me to mail this check or you want to stop by and pick it up?
Yes.
Or, you know, you want me to, you know, pay it by credit card? You want me to, you know, anything but the mail?
I agree.
But, all right, enough about the postal service. Um, Mr. Barnhart, you have any questions for Dan?
Well, sure.
Well, you're in a chippy mood, chipper mood today.
It's amazing how much the interest has peaked since we had these hearings and the, you know, the whole events transpired.
I think we woke them up.
Yeah, because, you know, to have zoning, you have to have interest in your area to protect the zoning ordinance and to protect what you have. And now the people are aware of that.
Yes.
And, uh, I don't know how many applications we had for the zoning board, probably seven, something like that.
So, and if I don't want to interrupt you.
No, go ahead.
I think one of the main reasons for that is a position you all took in sending a certified letter then informed every person that lives in the designed area that this was going to take place. Now, here again, we knew about maybe the planning board of public hearing. But when, when the leaders of a, of a committee find it necessary or their obligation is to inform, in my case, a person who lives in the zoned area that is under attack, I use that slightly, uh, it wakes you up.
Yeah, well, it, that's what it was designed to do.
And it worked.
Because, you know, depending on what the planning commission did, my position was, hey, it's all or nothing. You know, if they take this out, that totally strips the zoning board of, you know, you, you've lost the heart of your zoning.
You're right.
Uh, which brings up another question. Uh, if, you know, you're familiar with the zoning map?
Yes.
It's one bizarre shaped piece of.
It's terrible.
And, you know, it barely covers Chateau Gay. It barely cover, well, it probably half covers the other subdivision, um, Mountain Brook.
Mountain Brook.
Yeah, you know.
Part of, part of Mill Point.
Yeah. Do you have any thoughts about that?
Yeah, I think, I think it should be re-mapped. I, I, I don't know what that would take.
Well, it takes a grassroots effort by the people to determine what areas they want to incorporate, to contact the people. Because you almost need 100, I, I assume you need 100% cooperation from the zone, from the prospective zone people.
If I'm not mistaken, Jeff, there'd probably be a petition, right?
There'd be a petition and then there's basically another zone.
Right.
The area, there'd be a petition.
But that, that's up to you all. You know, we're not going to do it. You've got to do it.
Yeah, and I think the initiative has to come, maybe, in my opinion, it would have to come from the HOAs that are buttered up against.
That'd be a starting point, yeah.
Zone, because I don't think that, you know, we could go and say, okay, we want y'all to be part of this and have any leverage to convince them that it would be a good thing, other than the zoning ordinance itself.
Yeah.
So I, I do.
Well, that's not the, mention the fact that the zoning ordinance too may need to be updated as well as the areas.
Well, I was, I was gonna say that too, Jim. I mean, it hasn't been touched for, since 1975.
Fifty years, right, yeah.
You know, so.
You know, it's, it's, it's a two-pronged, two-pronged attack, but that's, that's up to you all. Okay, okay.
Mr. Whitaker.
Thank you for coming in and, and willingness to, uh, to take part of the community that, you know, we all value. And I know Eddie always says, you know, to be impartial the best you can on any board, listen to both sides of the story. And I, I don't foresee that ever being a problem with, with that group right now. I mean, I think you all come in with an open mind and, you know, listen to the people who may want to have a, an option changed and, uh, just hope you give a good consideration.
Good morning.
Good morning.
First of all, every time you've come to the podium, uh, you've always been very polite, very professional, and that's appreciated. You hold yourself very well. Thank you. My, my biggest thing is, is with this particular board is that I, I think that you're going to see some changes in your neighborhood. And the only thing that I would ask anybody on that board is to be able to treat all parties fair. And to be able to sit down and reason out what's best for your neighborhood, what will fit, what, what, what won't fit. And, uh, being able to just, you know, justify your, your reasons and, uh, and go back to business.
I, I think if everyone understands the way zoning, uh, ordinance is written right now, there is availability to build things. Yes. Uh, maybe that needs to be changed to a degree. Secondly, then, I know when I left, when you all made your decision and I left that meeting and the whole way out here, there was a number of different people that lived in or near our community and said, oh, I'm so glad we won. I never considered win or lose. I considered what was going to be best and what the majority of people felt was the best interest of not so much me, but what was best for a group of people. And that's where I stood with. I, I have yet, under my own roof, the company comes over and they say, well, you guys won that thing. We didn't win. It was a decision based upon what was going to be the best thing to do.
Yeah, well, and I agree with you. There's a lot of times there's not a win or lose situation, right? It's, it's, it's.
Right or wrong.
What can we do to, uh, keep our community the way we want it or needs to be? Councilperson Gokanar, I'm sorry, you.
Oh, okay.
Okay. Well, Dan, I'd like to echo what, what Eddie said, you know, anytime you up at the podium, you're, you're very professional, right? Um, and, and I, I'd like to echo with the, I, I felt that the public hearing went very, very well. I thought that, um, very, people presented it of itself very well. Um, it wasn't a shouting match. It was, there wasn't, uh, even though people had every right to be passionate, um, they, they kept it very professional and that goes a long way. So the, the one thing I, I said something about one of the other applicants I went, went last week. Um, and you said it in your very first statement was that you gotta be willing to look at the document and see if your times change. You know, there, there's, there's things that, um, you know, 46 years ago, uh, you didn't have, uh, townhouses. However, this isn't looking to be a townhouse project. And I guarantee you, 46 years ago, I didn't think I'd ever be old, you know? So, so, you know, and, and I, I told the other gentleman, one of my visions is exactly what Mr. Henry is presenting. Is a, a retirement community, right? Um, and, and I think I'm correct on this, Mr. Barnhart, um, is basically a 55 and older. So if, if I was a member of the board, I would look at, okay, who do I want as a neighbor?
It'd be a perfect.
It'd be a perfect neighbor, right? And, and I don't know.
I'm better, Doug, unless you and I are better.
He's not talking about us, right? Even though we meet the criteria.
I'll make some sound.
Yeah, but, but my gosh, it'd be, it'd be great. And, and, um, and then, then you start thinking, okay, how can you make it more affordable? And how can you make it to the point where, where, um, I don't want to mow a big yard, right? In the old days in City of Martinsburg, you, you'd call them duplexes. Nowadays, you call them villas, right? And, and to me, I think, my sister, she's much older than me and she'll hate that. No, she's not much older. I always call her my older sister and she gets mad at me. But, you know, um, they're in their 60s, her and her husband. And they, they're thinking of a villa, right? Someplace where they can go home. They don't have to mow two acres of grass. They don't have to take care of a, you know, 3,000 some square foot house, a nice little villa, enough, you know, for.
One level.
One level, right? A nice community, maybe where you can get on a golf cart and go see Scott McAvoy or, or Dan, right? Talk about how, how good our lives are. And, and then, and then the other thing that happens when, when you get into places like that and, and you're our age is you start thinking, hey, my health's going downhill, right? I'm gonna have to, I want to be close to a hospital. Well, some people, my dad would, right? At 86. Um, um, and then, you know, I, I, I told the other guy, it'd be nice to get in my golf cart and go down to my doctor's office or something, don't even have to get in the car.
I agree.
Those are all pluses.
It is.
And I think that's probably where we need to address the issue of the ordinance itself.
Yeah, so I mean, what I'm getting at, it could be with the vision that you have, it could be a, a, a nice, going through the proper procedure and ask for variances and stuff and say, hey, we're not, maybe we're not talking about commercial space. Maybe we're talking about professional space. Right? Just a, a, a different on words. Um, and, um, you know, so it, I, I like your openness as Councilperson Gokanar said, uh, and, and, uh, I, I really liked your professionalism. So, um, with that said, I'll stop. But, but, um, it's, uh, we don't have a community in, in town like that and, and, or in the county. There was one that started out on Eagle School Road.
There's one up there at Spring Mills.
Fifth Avenue?
Well, no, but villas.
Yeah, villas. And that's Mr. Henry's. I mean, and, and so you have, you know, you have, um, the president of CMB Bank lives in a villa now. And it's kind of like, how cool is that? You know, we're all getting older. I moved into apartments. Well, thank you for applying, all right?
Thank you, guys.
All right. All right, next is Sheriff Nathan Harmon, follow-up discussion on the civil service. Good morning, Sheriff.
Good morning, sir. So I've had communication with Mr. Delagati. We've heard that we're not legally bound by anything to do this transition. Listen, Beavers has passed a law on our amendments with the Civil Service Commission here in Berkeley County. We're set to have a sit-down discussion about the amendments, uh, as well as discussing their support on some things that need change in American control. So, uh, we've got the head nod from, from everybody and, uh, as I previously stated earlier and that we've also gotten, um, some, uh, interest from other officers that are considering coming over.
Is this legislative changes?
There's only one legislative change that I've recognized so far that needs to be done legislatively. And that is as an applicant, as a brand-new applicant off the street, come in, you comply, you're not required to be a Berkeley County resident. However, if you're reapplying to a sheriff's office, if you worked in Jefferson County as a sheriff, and you resigned and wanted to start a business, but you still resided in Jefferson County, because you don't have the Berkeley moving and buying a home, you cannot apply to the Berkeley County Sheriff's Office to be reinstated because you're not a Berkeley County resident.
So it's county by county?
Yes, sir.
I thought, I thought you said it was by state, but county by county.
That is, that's gonna have to be, it's, it, honestly, sir, it's a, it's a, I look at it as a formality that's over more. Honestly, sir, I look at it as a formality that's overruled. So, it needs to be revisited. I don't see any major pushback whatsoever.
Have you talked to any of the legislators about this or anything?
Not yet, sir.
How's that? How... I pass cars that are police officers in Jefferson County all the time that live in Berkeley County. More so municipal than sheriff.
And it's by statute, it's right there in the statute. You have to be a Berkeley County resident by civil service requirements for us to hire you and the Berkeley County.
Won't you agree, Mr. Wine? You probably seen...
Oh, what?
Oh, I...
I have a lot of Berkeley County officers that live behind, way out in their driving to the county. It may not be in their ordinance, theirs is a civil service code.
Is it Berkeley County Civil Service Code or West Virginia State Civil Service?
It's a Berkeley County Civil Service Code. So, that's one of the things we want to change here, but it's also statutory. Captain Hall found that, and that's one of the things that, like you said, it's a formality. I don't think it's even been...
Statutory with the state?
Yes, sir.
So, it does affect all counties?
It can. Not an issue I really wanna bring up because if they're doing it, then it's...
Well, no, and I'm not trying to browbeat anybody. I'm just, you know?
Yeah.
What's the intent at that time to have it in there?
So, basically, basically, we can't move forward with what you wanna do currently?
Sorry, sir?
We can't. So, basically, we can't move forward with what you want?
No, we can move forward with this lateral change, yes, but lateral changes have to happen within the confines of Berkeley County.
Okay, okay. All right. So...
As far as the residency.
All right, so, and then, the other part was, we was gonna talk about the finance side of it or, you know, the structure, but right now, I think we said we'd be able to do it within your current budget that we just set.
Yes, sir.
I mean, we know we may have to make some adjustments, but at the same...
Slight, and you're talking literally...
Minimal.
Yes, seven, eight thousand dollars directly. And just for the commission's appeasement, West Virginia Code seventeen dash fourteen dash eight states that those eligible for reinstatement must be a resident of the county in which they are applying for reinstatement.
So, it's only, it's only for reinstatement?
For reinstatement, yes, sir.
So, basically, what I was talking to Mr. Wine about was, it's okay that you don't live in the county that you serve in.
Yes, it's okay.
Okay, all right, so...
It's for reinstatement.
Okay, all right, all right.
That's the only thing we found that we have to change, let's say. The rest of what we wanna do can happen right here.
Okay, all right. All right, we need a motion to approve for the sheriff, I'm thinking, Jeff, you can correct me if I'm wrong, a motion to approve the sheriff to move forward with reinstating county prior deputies, I believe.
It's that the pay scales one, two, and three will be reinstated.
Okay. We have a motion on the floor?
Second.
Second, any discussion? I'd just like to say, Sheriff, I think it's great that you're thinking, all the time thinking about, how do we make the sheriff's department better? And, and very creative on how we get there and, at the same time, in the long run, save money. Because that's how we was talking about it, and then we're starting to come back where it's staying at. I need that fifty-five and older community already. So, so, the, because in the long run, we start saying, okay, we may grow the compensation line item, but we're gonna actually decrease probably our operating and training.
And you gotta think about also the monies that would have been expended for a deputy to achieve a five-year experience level within this department, and that cost in and by itself would essentially be an area of all that.
Plus the cost of not having an officer for a year to a year and a half. They would go pretty much almost instantly into controlling our community.
Yes, sir.
Sheriff, I like the fact that you've included the Deputy Sheriff's Association in this conversation and that you've received a letter of support from them. And I think that's critically important to have the support of this change on the right and body.
Yeah.
If your deputies are in favor of that, which they are, we've received that letter.
I think, I think I'm gonna say something else on the record and I hope your deputies hear this, is that over the past three years, and more so since you've been elected as sheriff, I think there's a huge cooperation with the deputies, the Sheriff's Association, you, and the county council. I think we've gotten to know each other, because over the years, we've been bad for the sheriff's department. In reality, we were never that way. It's kinda like with the court marshals. You know, they were always told, we were the devils, right? And, and it's that cooperation and that inner relationship that we're starting to create that, and have created, of saying, "We're here to help you, but you gotta help us at the same time." And we've came a long ways in a short time, and I appreciate that.
And I really appreciate the commission and the things that you guys have been open-minded about and moving forward as fast as Tom and I have wanted to move forward. That's greatly appreciated, and I can assure you that it echoed in the hallways of our office on the cooperation of the commission and everything that's been done to help advance the department. I've heard that with an earshot from other deputies, and just that everybody understands it's the same team, same fight, same goal, and that's the mentality that we preach over there. We think it's a healthy familial mentality that we advocate over there. We know that that appreciation is extended amongst veterans.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Wait a second, before I forget, that old timer's kicking in. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed, the motion carries. You have a couple gentlemen, if you have some time, that would like to talk to you. You can use our conference room if you like, if you have time. And also, I think you and I and Mr. De La Gotti or Jeff will need to meet too today.
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Okay, next is, we have Steve Catley, Parks and Rec, for request of building permit waiver fee. Mr. Councilperson Gokene is gonna fill in for Steve. Go ahead, Eddie.
Yes, sir. The Parks and Rec had received a donation from the Eastern Panhandle Youth Football League in the amount of ten thousand dollars to construct a twenty-by-twenty pavilion at Fort Hough Park. It will be installed. Normally, they had staff that could do this installation, but that person has since moved on. So, it's very critical, as you two know, at least to get those footers correct, you know, with that steel structure, there's not much wiggle room.
The structure was donated, or you got ten thousand dollars?
The ten thousand dollars was donated towards the B structure, which has been purchased.
The structure's a lot more than that, though, I'm sure.
Well, I'm not sure. But anyway, what they're asking for is that the four hundred and twenty, approximately four hundred and twenty dollars in the planning commission fees be waived.
Engineering or...
Engineering.
Right.
Yeah, engineering. Be waived.
For the permit. And this is a, what, a lean-to or open three-wall shelter?
No, I think it's a, it's a steel structure. I think it's probably a four-to-six poststructure would be my guess. I think it's very similar to the one that's down near the Tuscaloosa Creek at War Memorial Park, but just smaller. It's twenty-five.
Oh, okay.
I think it's something along that line. Very, very nice, and will fit in very well. They'll put it over on the, I think, the east side of the, actually, it was creek, which should be able to use it for a lot of different events that they'll have there.
All right.
Mr. President, I'm going to waive the four hundred and twenty dollar planning commission.
Building, no, engineer, well, the permit fee.
Yeah, the permit fee for the Parks and Rec.
How about motion on the floor? Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, sir. This does not exclude any inspections or anything, does it?
No, no, they'll still be inspected. The engineering department will still, and permitting department will still have to do the duties.
Yes.
All right, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed, the motion carries.
I guess there'll be utilities, power, or...
I don't know. Where it's located, I'm not sure they have power over there. But another interesting point that I really did appreciate is that, you know, this particular pavilion is not one that needs to be rented or reserved. You know, you could just, if your family wanted to have a picnic and you go out there and it's available, have a chill, you know, sort of, it's kind of like it's open and free.
To enhance the, this pavilion to enhance the, naturally, the use of the football season, I'm sure.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I would hope so.
Yep. All right, Penny, do we, I know there was a possibility of executive session. Do we have anything?
Yes.
Okay, so we have executive session for legal matters? Or we have executive session for economic development? Okay, all right. Any ideas from the public? All right, need to go into executive session for legal and economic development services? Motion been made?
Second.
Second, any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed, the motion carries. We're in the executive session.
All right. Okay. We're out of executive session. No action will be taken. Mr. Barnhart?
I'd like to recess, Mr. President. Boo.
We are re-